I'll call the July 28, 2015 regular meeting of the City Council to order. May we have the roll call?
The record will reflect that Councilmember Curry has an excused absence.
Okay, Mr. Harp, do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Selich. There's no closed session report this evening.
Okay, would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Dixon, followed by the invocation by Reverend Canon Cindy Evans Voorhees from St. James, the Great Episcopal Church.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and God visible with liberty and justice for all.
Creator God, we are all leaders in one form and another, whether we are civil servants or students, parents or teachers, employers or volunteers. Yet leadership is hard to define, so help us be the ones to define it with justice. Leadership is not about watching or correcting. Help us to remember it is about listening and connecting. Leadership is not about telling people what to do. Let us find out what people want. Leadership has its strength in humility and reason. Let us govern with pure hearts and minds. Leadership seeks truth and justice for everyone. Let us respect the dignity of every human being. Leadership is to recognize and interpret the signs of the times. Help us to embrace change with discernment and grace. Leadership is about seeking wisdom and information. Let us be open to dialogue. Bless all our leaders and the wonderful people of Newport Beach this evening, and let our greatest passion be compassion. Amen.
We don't have any presentations this evening, so Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the City Council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for City Council announcements.
Councilmember Pieter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On June 11, I spoke at an event put on by the Newport Mesa Tea Party about issues in Newport Beach. As part of that discussion, I made some comments regarding a potential settlement agreement with residential care facility operators. And sometimes when you're getting into making comments at public meetings, you say things without the benefit of having time to fully reflect on what you're saying. And I would like to apologize to the public and my fellow council members regarding the comments I made relating to a proposed settlement agreement. I misunderstood the current status of that agreement and the negotiations, and I thought my comments were within the realm of what was acceptable. After reflecting on this matter, however, I realized that my comments were premature and I should not have made those statements related to the proposed settlement agreement until it was executed. Also, at the Newport Mesa Tea Party event, I made some comments regarding residential care facilities, and when I made these comments, I was primarily focusing on hypothetical situations where there can be significant impacts on neighborhoods as a result of improper management. My comments were designed to discuss this type of hypothetical situation. I understand there are many fine residential care facilities in Newport where the operators abide by the laws and work well with the city and their neighbors. I also recognize that there are people who are disabled and desperately need to recover from their addiction to drugs and alcohol. And I fully support people who, in recovery, getting the help they need, and I'm personally committed to ensuring the city complies with the laws governing how we interact with people who are disabled. So that the extent that my comments were viewed as not supporting the laws that govern how people in recovery are treated, I apologize because that was not my intent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Petros?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For those that have been traveling up and down Dover Drive and have spilled your coffee in your lap or had to go to the dentist as a result, your angst is coming to a close. Starting tomorrow and going through Friday, Dover Drive will experience a lane closure as we, in the southbound direction, to allow for the city's contractor to rebuild curb and gutter and get the median and islands installed. Dover Drive is being reconstructed. We will soon have beautiful islands and a smooth travel way for all motorists in the neighborhood. But please, for the next couple of days, just be a little patient with us as we start that construction project. I do want to commend our Public Works Director, Dave Webb, on the work he's doing to accelerate this project. It is a long time coming, Dave. Thank you so much for getting it now before us.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. One announcement. This is Monster Mile Week. The Newport Beach Junior Lifeguard Program does their parade at 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, July 30, and at Balboa Peninsula Park. And 11 o'clock, they do their run one mile and swim one mile and all this exuberance, physical exuberance in between. I understand, Dave Kiff, sometimes you participate. Are you going to be doing that?
Yes, but please know that I always lose.
Anyone who completes this is always a winner. Anyway, their costumes are all dressing up. I hope you are too, Dave, as a sea creature. 1,340 junior lifeguards will be out there. It'll be great to have some of the community out there to cheer them on and to cheer our city manager. So, look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Muldoon? Councilmember Duffy?
Yes, I have a brief announcement about the Castaways Park. I hope it's not premature, but I'm very pleased to announce that it is not much of a park, but it is enough to have wonderful access for kayak launch and retrieve there under the bridge, and we will keep enhancing it as we go along with restroom-type of facilities, small ones. And we will have signage and we'll be selling this more down the road, but the idea is that it is a wonderful on-the-water facility that we can start to enjoy, and the views there are tremendous, and you'll get a lot of enjoyment out of that. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. I have a few announcements. On the 16th, I attended the ribbon-cutting of the new Pacific Amphitheater entry from the Orange County Fairgrounds with Mayor Costa Mesa and the Fair Board. And if anyone hasn't been over there yet to the fair to attend one of the concerts with the new entry and layout they have there, it enhances that experience even more. So, we're having a lot of good concerts there this summer also. And then on the 20th, with Mayor Pro Tem Dixon, I attended the final leg of the law enforcement torch run for the Special Olympics, which stopped by our City Hall here. And thanks to our police officers, we had a whole group of them participate in that leg of the torch run and helped support the Special Olympics. And it was really great seeing all those runners coming through the city with the "Flame of Hope," as they called it. And then on the 23rd, we're the host city for the countries of Mexico and Fiji, and I participated in welcoming them to the dunes. They had a luncheon and program forum, and they did some of their training over at UCI in Newport Beach. We were their hosts for a few days as they came to our country to participate in the Special Olympics, which had their opening ceremony over the weekend and are going on right now in Los Angeles. And then on the next day, I participated, and again, Mayor Pro Tem Dixon was there also, another Special Olympics event where we, with Explore Ocean, hosted 500 Special Olympic athletes on the USA team at the Balboa Pier Park. And that was really terrific. They had a lot of events for the athletes, full dinner, and they had a great time down on the beach. So that was really a terrific welcome for those athletes, and really hats off to Explore Ocean and all the people that helped out on that, and also to the dunes because they're the ones that hosted the athletes from Mexico and Fiji. Then also on the 24th, I attended the Newport Banning Ranch Land Trust picnic and awards ceremony where they were handing out awards for folks that were helping in doing some of the native plant restoration that they're getting started out on the Banning Ranch property. And then on Saturday, we had a town hall meeting on Balboa Island at the fire station. We had about 200 people there, and the subject was the status of the Park Avenue Bridge and the Balboa Island seawalls. I want to thank our public works staff, Dave Webb and Bob Stein and Mark Vikoyevich, for participating in that. I presented the 10-point plan that the City Council gave staff direction on at our last study session, and I think it was well-received by the Balboa Island folks. And if you remember on that, the 10th point was dealing with sea level rise, and so I'd like to have for council consideration on our next agenda discussion of developing a sea level rise policy. I know that that gets to be controversial with a lot of folks, but the fact of the matter is that it's a requirement of the Coastal Commission and State Lands Commission that we deal with this issue, and I expect that other regulatory agencies are going to be following along with that. So, we might as well get ahead of it and start dealing with it. And then lastly, the junior lifeguard are partnering with our Recreation Department and an organization called Heartfelt Cardiac Projects to offer low-cost cardiac screenings this Friday, July 31, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. in the community room of City Hall right across the foyer there. Each screening will include an echocardiogram, an electrocardiogram for a donation of $85 a person, ages five and up, and these tests usually cost around $1,500, so it's a good deal. And sudden cardiac arrest often occurs in seemingly healthy people of all ages, including young athletes who have no known heart diseases or other health problems, so early detection can help save lives. So we're encouraging parents to make an appointment to have their kids checked, but community members of all ages are welcome to schedule a screening for themselves. So you visit heartfeltcardiacprojects.org to make an appointment. That's heartfeltcardiacprojects.org, and you can make your appointment there. Okay, our next item then is matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. There's three items, review of council policy A-12, a review of urban water management plan, and then there's a note here that the items requested by Councilmember Curry at the last meeting will be done at the August 11 meeting. So are there any public comments on these three items? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. We can do this in one motion, so if there's a motion to put these on a future agenda, I'd entertain that.
I'll move that they be placed on a future agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, please vote when the screen comes up. Are we voting by hand again?
No.
Here we go.
The motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Public comments on consent calendar. This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion, items 1 through 15. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each of the items for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Okay, thank you. Under council policy A-6, I'm placing item 17, the fiscal year 2015/16 special event support funding recommendations on the consent calendar. Mr. Kiff, do you have your recommendation on that item and as well as any other items on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, staff asked that you move to continue, or part of your recommendation is to continue item 8. That involves plan review services. And item 10, the school resource officer program agreement.
Okay, and item 17 also?
And item 17, yes.
8, 10, and 17 are on the consent calendar recommended for continuance. Any public comment on the consent calendar? Please come forward. Mayor Selich, could you clarify what you just said as item 17? Item 17 has been moved to the consent calendar with the recommendation for continuance to the next meeting. Any other comments on the consent calendar? Okay, I'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Pieter, any items to pull?
I'll pull 11 and 14.
And Councilmember Petros?
None.
Mayor Pro Tem Dixon?
None.
Councilmember Muldoon?
Yes, 15.
And Councilmember Duffy?
I have a conflict on item 15 because I have a commercial, I lease a commercial marina.
And so you'll be recusing yourself on that item? Okay, thank you. And I have no items to pull. Do you have enough there for a motion?
Just want to clarify, item 15, Councilmember Muldoon?
No, Duffy has a recusal.
By con.
Mr. Mayor, I move the balance of the consent calendar, items 1 through 15, with the exception of items 11 and 14, which have been pulled. Item 15, recusal by Councilmember Duffy. Was there any other?
Sorry, Mr. Muldoon pulled 15 as well.
Okay, pull 15. Item 8, continued, 10, continued, and item 17, move to consent and to be continued.
Correct. Okay, everyone clear on that motion? Okay, please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for items 3 and 4. Ordinance number 2015-23, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Title 15 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to provide an expedited streamlined permitting process for small residential rooftop solar systems. And ordinance number 2015-22, Mayor, we need your vote. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending Section 5.36.020 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code regarding inspections of hotel guest registries. The motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Okay, thank you. So the first item that we're going to discuss that's been pulled is item number 11, tentative agreement with the Association of Newport Beach Ocean Lifeguards. Councilmember Pieter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kiff, I was just pulling this to be able to point it out to people that we're intending to execute an MOU and that this is their first notice of what's going on. Can you explain a little bit to everybody as far as how we're trying to be more transparent this way?
Sure. Your council has asked us to give additional transparency to labor agreements that come before you, and in this case, for instance, tonight's action is just to place it on the agenda with the costing and the MOU so you can see, you and the public can see what that looks like before planned bringing that back to you on August 11 for adoption.
And will this stay on the website as far as one of those things that's on our title page or our homepage so that people can refer to that?
We...
A link away from it, obviously.
A link away from it. It always stays on as this, from this agenda. We could probably try to improve that a little bit more so that people could look directly for a labor agreement.
Since it's pending.
Yeah.
That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. I'll move staff recommendation to receive and consider it.
Second.
Okay, any public comment on this item?
May I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
To that point, and there is a section on the newly redesigned website for, there's a section for transparency, so maybe that would be a good place to put that.
Thank you. Did you want to make a comment, Mr. Moser?
Yes, Mayor Selich, members of the council. My name is Jim Moser. I submitted a written comment, and I understand, I see now, looking at the abstract where my comment originated, it seems that the current MOU expired more than a year ago, if I'm reading the abstract correctly, on July 1, 2014. We're in 2015 now, so it's talking about last year. And therefore, the new agreement is retroactive apparently for a year. This was not clear in the staff report, so I hope that there's, first, there's a possibility it's a typo and the current thing ended in July of this year. The other is that it's not a typo and we've been without an agreement for a year. And I hope when the item comes back for final approval that it will be clear to the public if there's any significance to that retroactivity, why it is, whether the currently approved stuff is having any effect over wages or benefits over the previous year when there apparently was no agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item?
Motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Thank you. Okay, next item is item number 14, the wildlife protection banner, approval of an encroachment permit. Councilmember Pieter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, what I'm looking for here is a staff report. I'd like to know a little bit more about this group. Of course, I'm putting Dave on the spot.
Absolutely, but we're here for you. Yes, thank you. This is a local group that just recently formed, and I think it had to do a lot with the recent incident we had where we lost the tree, and some very passionate people, along with a lot of groups, got together and are requesting this banner. And it's for a 30-day period. Normally, this would not be per year L-16 policy, but we felt in light of what happened and that the Peninsula Point Association is also supporting this, that it would probably be good PR to go ahead and allow this group to put this banner up at Peninsula Point for this 30-day period. I don't think there's any specific ties to this group. They're just several environmentally conscious groups that would like to kind of bring awareness to the birds.
So we feel sorry for the birds, and so we're going to put a banner up. Does it encroach, it's not blocking sight lines or any of these kinds of things. There's no safety issue with this encroachment, right?
There won't be a safety issue. It's in the median, and we'll look at the sight distance on that.
That's the only question I had, Mr. Mayor.
Does it clarify? And it's just for 30 days, isn't it?
It's just for 30 days.
I'll move the item.
I'll second. Okay, any public comment on this one? Come forward, please. It's your name?
My name's Roger Lockhart. I'm a resident of Lido Island. And the issue comes up, at what point and what's the standard for putting up signs? If there's the right to put up the sign for this, I'd just like to know, do I have the right to put up signs for other issues? And what are the standards going to be for that? Thank you.
Okay. Does staff want to comment on our policy on these banners, just in general?
Yes, typically, your policy L-16 applies to banners, and generally, all banners are prohibited except for real estate signs and banners that come to a general-wide, community-wide event, a nonprofit organization that's open to the general public. In this case, this is not particularly fits that exemption. It's a little beyond that, but we did feel with the request of the Balboa Peninsula Point organization that it'd probably be appropriate. It is also on the very end of Peninsula Point. It's on a mainstream arterial like PCH, so there is some consideration of that, too.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no further discussion. Please vote when the screen comes up.
With Councilmember Pieter voting no, the motion carries 5-1.
Okay, next item is item 15, the commercial marina rental rate approach. Did you want to comment first, Councilmember Pieter?
Which one?
On 15?
Actually, Kevin pulled that.
Oh, okay, I thought you did first. Kevin, go ahead.
Just quickly to note, Councilmember Duffy previously announced his conflict and has left the dais.
Just so that there's clarification, I know that Mr. Kiff and I emailed about it. Just wanted to get his verbal summary for those in the audience and those watching as it relates to the Thailand Commission as well, or State Lands Commission, excuse me.
So, Mr. Muldoon, council members, this item is a summary of what I and the rest of the staff has been doing as a result of Mr. Muldoon's request to have the commercial marina rates looked at again. And basically, we've frozen the rates at their current levels. We've asked that George Jones, in addition to a new appraisal, that he analyze whether or not the State Lands Commission's Southern California Benchmark Survey, which right now is at 33 cents a square foot, would be applicable in Newport Beach, so we can get a professional view of that. I've communicated that to, I've been working mostly with Mr. Purcell and the audience to at least let him know that that has been our approach. We're going to get the appraisal back, bring that recommendation back to you, or at least we'll probably just bring the appraisal back to you and that analysis in a study session, and you can provide us further direction. And I also did let the State Lands Commission know of this approach, and they didn't have a comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item?
Mayor Selich, members of the council, I would like to repeat the comment that I submitted to you in writing, which is, at your May 12 meeting, the public saw the council as a whole vote to put on a future agenda, a vote on whether the city staff should devote the resources to have a third party look at the commercial rental rates. And it bothers me when the entire council voted to take a vote on whether they should do this, that a single council member seems to be directing the city staff to do what would be the result of the vote that has not been taken yet. I have a problem with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just a quick comment there. Actually, I haven't consulted much with Councilmember Muldoon about this. I've been working more closely with the mayor and with Ms. Dixon, just for the record.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Okay, do we have a motion on this?
I move.
Okay, in a second.
Or Kevin, you go ahead.
Sure, I'll move the...
Second.
Okay, please vote when the screen comes up.
Mayor, we need your vote.
My screen isn't showing.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Public comments on non-agenda items are invited on, public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes before speaking. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Any public comments on any items not on the agenda? Non-agenda items?
So what I'd like to address is the Fourth Amendment in general, not specifically towards the matter which you've set for the calendar for next week. I'd like to ask the city attorney to take...
State your name, please.
Roger Lockhart, I stated earlier, of the Supreme Court decision which was argued in March of this year, and the decision was issued on June 22, and that specifically is the case of City of Los Angeles, petitioner versus Mr. Patel et al. The Supreme Court in that ruling very specifically ruled that any attempt to seize the records or view the records of hotels without a warrant is unconstitutional. And I would like, I'm not sure why we still have this on the calendar. Quite frankly, I thought it would have been removed as soon as I saw that, but I'd like to ask each of you council people to look at that, and I think it's just on its face. It's a moot issue at this point in time. We don't need to spend more time and energy on it. And Mr. City Attorney, I'd be happy to give you a copy of that decision if you don't have it, but it's pretty much a done deal.
I did item 4 tonight, basically modified our code to comply with that decision. I don't know if you saw that.
Actually, the modify, and again, I'm not going to address yours specifically because this is public comment period, but you know, I think I'm going to invite each of the council people to really look and say, the intention is the intention to go in for warrantless searches on records, because that's really what this comes down to. The Supreme Court in this ruling also ruled that facial challenges are appropriate or may be appropriate, and I can assure you that if this does go through, one will be filed against the City of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Paul Mathias, and I've been involved in the city for forty years, initially working in a family business, as a city employee, as a resident for the last twenty-nine years, as a property owner. I appear before you tonight with a matter of concern. Earlier this year, I spoke to this body about my hope that the council would properly address the illegal leak to the Orange County Register of a confidential memorandum authored by city attorney here in HARP about a private personnel matter involving an assistant city manager. I opine that the matter should be referred to the Orange County Grand Jury. I have not heard if the council has taken appropriate action on the matter. In June of two thousand fifteen, I was told by one of the public safety officials who acted as a raider and participated in the promotional testing for Newport Beach Fire Battalion Chief in two thousand fourteen, that a representative from the city manager's office voiced a biased commentary about then-current chief fire officers. It is not known what the intention or motivation was for the Newport Beach employee to make those remarks. In December of two thousand fourteen, three chief fire officers filed a civil suit on a single cause of action, claiming age bias. In the claim, a statement was included that spoke to a comment from a representative from Human Resources Department regarding something that would be unpleasant. With little discovery, the city paid these former employees well over three hundred thousand dollars. Another, yet much larger, discrimination lawsuit was settled on or about June by a former police department employee for an undisclosed sum. This is in addition to the ten million dollars spent since two thousand nine on employee-related discrimination claims. Since June of this year, I've seen two published articles in the Daily Pilot and watched one city council public comments video of a civil service board member who is harshly critical of an elected member of the city council. Concerns me that the bias of this board member may be reflected in any decision rendered during the term of the board, on the board. Further, I am concerned that these printed oral opinions could be used among a legal challenge by an employee who is dissatisfied with a ruling from the civil service board. Taken together, this series of events speaks to significant challenges within the administration of Human Resources in Newport Beach. For the most recent matter, I ask that you use the power vested in the council by the city charter under Section seven-eleven, Part D, and authorize the civil service board to investigate the comments regarding the promotional exam for Fire Battalion Chief in two thousand fourteen. Thank you, and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda items?
Mayor Selic and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. I guess this comment is partially related to a little bit of Mr. Mathias's comment about sometimes large dollar amounts of settlements that the city enters into, and also to Councilman Pieter's earlier comment about his perhaps premature comment about a settlement agreement that was being discussed but had not been yet approved in closed session. My observation is that once they are approved, these settlements do become not only public records, but also matters of considerable public interest to the residents and to the press as well. Yet the city has no clear policy on how those approved settlement agreements should be made visible to the public. Although we do have a page on the city website that says contracts and agreements approved in the last thirty days. At your last meeting, there was an announcement of a settlement that had been reached in the group homes litigation, probably the one that Councilman Pieter was talking about. And a number of meetings back, there was an announcement of a settlement that had been reached with the Friends of the Firering Group. All I can say is that last I looked, which was just a few minutes ago, neither of those agreements had been posted on our page for contracts and agreements approved in the last thirty days. And last I looked, asked at the city clerk's office, which was admittedly, I think, about a week ago, neither of those was available for public inspection yet. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item eighteen, oral reports from city council on committee activities. Councilmember Muldoon? Councilmember Duffy? Councilmember Pieter?
None.
Councilmember Petros?
Very, very briefly, on July twenty-first, we hosted a meeting of the Finance Committee. It was well-attended. The subject matter, jog my memory here, I'm the stupid one, remember? I am, we had a review of the city's reserve policies and a good discussion about that with the notion at present to stay the course with our reserve policies, and then a more open discussion about the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget and budgeting process. And I think that there was consensus that as we move forward, under possibly lessons learned or ways to improve the process, that the budget process be started earlier in the year with the council being invited and the public being invited in to discuss more global policy matters as they relate to the budgetary impact. So that was a very helpful and robust discussion. In addition, on August sixth, at two PM, here in the city council chambers, we will be hosting an aviation committee meeting. This is very timely in that the FAA is looking at changes to approach and departure patterns throughout the entire Southland. This may affect approach and departures at John Wayne Airport. There is a comment period pending on that. I will thank Supervisor Michelle Steele of the Second District for inviting the city to be a participant in those discussions, continuing our longstanding collaborative efforts on behalf of the City of Newport Beach and the County of Orange as we look to mitigate any of the impacts that may arise from John Wayne Airport. So August sixth, two PM, here in the city council chambers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dixon?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Muldoon? Councilmember Duffy? And I have none. So move to current business, item sixteen, approval of agreement with international line builders for citywide streetlight maintenance and as-needed repair services.
So, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this item is continued from last time, and it's on the discussion calendar because it's a large dollar item. It involves how we maintain our lighting fixtures. This has been outsourced. George Murdock oversees this contract and others, and I know he'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions for staff on this item?
I just ask a quick question, George. I've had people ask me in Balboa Village about the LED lighting. Has that changed down there? I don't know if this contract has anything to do with it, but I've just been asked that question.
I'm sorry, yes, it will be, it will be changing. We've ordered lights for down in McFadden Square and some other areas, but Balboa Village, I don't think we're scheduled yet to do LED, but that's something that we're looking at.
Okay, any public comment on this item?
Mayor Selic and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. I submitted some comments and questions about this in writing late this afternoon. I doubt that you've had time to look at those. Reason I put them in writing is because they involve a lot of numbers, which are hard to digest and hard to communicate verbally. But the bottom line of this is we're currently contracting for the routine streetlight maintenance. Have been for the last four years, the four years that we've outsourced this, at an annual cost of about fifty-two thousand dollars. And the new proposal is for four times that much, at least as I understand the report, it's two hundred and fifteen thousand for the effort that is currently the fifty-one thousand, and then there's another fifty-five thousand on top of that for the vendor to be purchasing the materials. So it's curious to me that we would be quadrupling the cost unless there's a significant change to what this vendor is doing compared to the old one. And curiously, the old vendor didn't seem to bid on the new contract. And then, not quite related to this, is a contract that was approved by you back in May for the on-call portion of this, which is like when a streetlight gets knocked down and somebody has to come out and repair it. We were told a number of years ago in a staff report that those incidents cost about five hundred dollars each to clean up, and there's like twenty of them a year, so that would be like a ten thousand dollar cost, yet the contract for that is, I believe, now two hundred thousand dollars a year. So there's some numbers here that at first sight don't add up too well, and I would hope you would be inquiring why the costs have gone up so much. And it really kind of brings into question whether outsourcing is advantageous to us because when we outsource the routine maintenance, four years ago, the in-staff cost was about, was said to be about two hundred and fifty thousand, and now we're up to almost about the same amount with an outside contractor. Thank you.
Okay. Staff, do you want to comment on why the annual cost is different this time?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So on the cost aspect, so two thousand eleven, as Mr. Mosier mentioned, the company that bid on the maintenance, so remember, this is just to change the light bulbs, the reason they didn't bid on this one in two thousand fifteen is they underbid the job. Basically, they were losing money. A lot of things have changed since two thousand eleven, so we've added seven hundred lights, which are the uplights for the trees, the beach floods, the parking lots, the new parks. In addition, we've, prevailing wage is almost double the cost for the outsourcing than it was in two thousand eleven. It's still cheaper than we, than doing in-house, just maintenance, but that's the difference in the cost. We did a competitive RFP for the maintenance. And so, and another thing I want to point out is maintenance and repair are two different things. Repair is to replace the streetlight pole when it's been hit in a traffic accident. Two different things, two different contracts, and we get the best price for each one. I guess I could equate it to, a window washer is much less expensive than hiring a person that replaces a window. A person that replaces the window could probably clean the window, but you're going to pay too much money. This is very similar. We have a maintenance and then a repair contract. The, the additional, I'm sorry, the contractor, the staff report that Mr. Mosier mentions actually doesn't say that it costs four hundred dollars. This was back in two thousand thirteen. It's about seven thousand dollars to replace a streetlight pole that's been hit by a car. Fortunately, the insurance companies pay us back, so it costs us nothing, and ninety-nine percent of them were reimbursed for those. But this is a contractor that does an emergency response at two in the morning, cleans up the mess, turns off the power, makes sure it's safe, sometimes have to, has to de-energize it for police and fire so they can extract a person maybe from a vehicle, and then come out the next day or two and install a new light. So it's not quite two to four hundred dollars, it's more like seven thousand dollars for the materials and the replacement. So that's, that's about all, I think.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay, Mayor Protem Dixon seconds it. Please vote when the screen comes up. Okay, and item number seventeen was continued under the consent calendar. Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the councilmembers who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none, we're going to adjourn this evening in memory of Joseph O'Hora. Newport Beach resident Joseph O'Hora passed away on July fourth. He was a native of Scranton, Pennsylvania, and George earned a bachelor's degree from Georgetown University and began what would become a long and prominent career in business. His career eventually brought Joe, his wife Marie, and family to Southern California, and they made Newport Beach their home for the next forty-three years. He was an exceptional sailor and logged tens of thousands of miles on the water and won numerous championships. He and Marie also sailed all around the world together. In addition to being a businessman, entrepreneur, and sailor, Joe was a historian, Eagle Scout, a great cook, a member of UCI's Chancellor Club, and an active Georgetown University supporter. He also served his community as an active member of the Newport Harbor Yacht Club, member of the Central Newport Beach Community Association, and as a director of the former Protect Our Parks Organization. Joe worked hard to make the soon-to-open Marina Park a reality. He's survived by his wife Marie, daughter Maureen, daughter Molly, and her husband Jeff, eight grandchildren, and a great-granddaughter. Services will be held on August seventh at ten AM at Our Lady of Mount Carmel Catholic Church on the peninsula. I'd just like to say as a personal note, I met Joe when I first got on the city council. I was, one of my first assignments was to work on the Marina Park project when we were just conceptualizing it, and Joe was one of the leaders of Protect Our Parks along with Tom Billings and Craig Morissette. And in those days, we were just trying to come up with what Marina Park would be. There were so many different ideas on it. And I just have to say, Joe was a great guy to work with. He was kind of curmudgeonly in a friendly way. He always had kind of a wry smile on his face, and he was a great guy to work with. And it was an honor for me to work with him in the early days of Marina Park, and he certainly will be missed. And with that, we're adjourned.